I am calling together to order the Board of Education meeting for May the 4th, 2020, at 12 noon. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
My name is Cheryl Logan. I am the President of the Wichita Public Schools Board of Education. Today, we are conducting a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Official business will be conducted at this meeting. This meeting is taking place at the School Service Center at 3850 North Hydraulic Street in Wichita, Kansas. The Governor's current executive order concerning mass gatherings and safety of the public, Board staff, and the Board of Education mandates that, as well as the last several meetings of the Board of Education. Today's meeting will be conducted in an unusual manner. No members of the public are present at this meeting. Board members Julie Hedrick, Ernestine Crable, and Ron Rosales are attending this meeting remotely. The other three members, four members are Mike Rody, Ben Blakely, Stan Reiser, and me. We are attending the meeting in person. It is important to Wichita Public Schools Board of Education that in spite of the fact that the public is not present, we conduct this meeting in compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act. In this regard, this meeting is available to be viewed by the public in the following ways. The board meeting will be shared live via WPS-TV on Cox Channel 20 and on the district's website at www.usd259.org/WPTVonline, or by searching WPTV on the livestream app for phone, Roku, and the Apple TV. Following the conclusion of today's meeting, this meeting will be available on our Wichita Public Schools YouTube channel. It will also be rebroadcast on WPTV cable, Channel 20, and online, WPTV, 10 times per week. The rebroadcast schedule is available on our website, www.usd259.org/boe. This information was made known to the public by public notices by the Clerk of the Board published April 21st and April 28th. The agenda for this meeting was published on April 30th, 2020, at www.usd259.org/boe. Under the BOE Meetings, Agendas, and Minutes tab, the news media also received the main agenda and a portfolio containing the appendices. Revisions made after the publication but prior to this meeting were updated today on the online agenda which is being displayed at this meeting. The agenda for this meeting is available to be viewed and will be available after the meeting to be viewed at www.usd259.org/boe, under the BOE Meetings and Agendas tab. At this board meeting, all board members, district staff, and presenters will identify themselves by name and position before they speak to assist the public in following the meeting. Motions will be read before they are voted on, and each board member will announce how they are voting. The outcome of the vote will be announced after the vote has been taken. The public communications item that allows members of the public to speak at the board meetings has been removed from the agenda. Public communications will not be placed back on until the public again starts attending meetings. There will be an executive session at the end of this meeting. The following procedure will be used concerning the executive session. A motion will be presented by a board member that states the subject matter and justification under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for going into executive session. The motion will state the time the board will return from executive session. The live broadcast of the meeting will not end until the board returns from executive session and adjourns the meeting. Again, I want to reassure you that the board intends to conduct its meetings during this time, shelter-in-place orders are in effect, in compliance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and in a way that protects the safety and health of the public, district staff, and our board members. Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be conducted here at the School Service Center on May 18th at 12 noon. Well, welcome. We're glad to be back again. Mike, first item.
I think you'll need to take public role. Mr. Powell suggested that.
Thank you. I need to identify everyone that's here at the board table, so let's start with Mr. Reiser.
Stan Reiser, District 4, present.
Mike Rody, District 5.
Cheryl Logan, at large.
Ben Blakely, District 1.
Julie.
Julie Hedrick, District 2.
Ernestine Crable, District 3.
Ron Rosales, District 6.
Okay, thank you. I think everyone is present either remotely or here at the site. Next item.
Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board. Under Reports, Good News. Our presentation today is by Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools.
Gil Alvarez, Assistant Superintendent. Good afternoon, President Logan, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. I'm excited to be here today to talk about our seniors and celebrate and recognize the wonderful things that our seniors are doing. As we work to empower all students with the 21st century's skills and knowledge necessary for success, we are preparing our students to be future-ready through college and career opportunities. I have learned for the success to occur, it takes a great team. Our college and career coordinators, who have also helped put this slideshow together as well as the information in the slideshow, and our counselors work to prepare and help students choose their post-secondary opportunities. Our principals represent their outstanding staff who work faithfully to make sure that this type of opportunities do occur. In fact, academic success and graduation is a pre-K-12 success, so I would like to just quickly recognize our district employees from pre-K, elementary, middle school, and high school who have really made a difference in the lives of our students for their culminating activity as a senior heading into graduation. It also takes a family, so parents, grandparents, family members, thank you, and thanks for sharing your student and partnering with your schools for the success of your child. Unfortunately, we are not joined by our amazing seniors this afternoon. If you can remember, normally we have a huge crowd of seniors that are lined up behind you, but due to our circumstances, but we still want to honor their post-secondary achievements. Our seniors are in high demand by many colleges and universities across the state and country. Before we recognize these seniors, let me share a few statistics with you. The first number is 2,550. This is the number of students to graduate with the 2020 senior class of Wichita High School. So we are excited for the number of students that will be graduating, the number of seniors will be graduating, actually, in July when we have our commencement ceremonies. 552, this is the number of students receiving scholarship offers next school year. And the big number, 21,384,551, is the total amount of dollars in scholarships awarded to the senior class of 2020. Just quickly, just take a quick round of applause here at the table for those wonderful numbers. As I begin to recognize these students, you will see a picture with the student's name, their major scholarship awarded on the screen, as well as the college or university they plan to attend. By the way, these students represent the top 10 scholarship recipients, or any student that is receiving $40,000 or more. And I do have to recognize and thank Amanda Kingery, Executive Director of the Secondary Office, for helping put together this wonderful slideshow since they couldn't be here physically. We think that these wonderful pictures, you get to at least see our seniors' faces, which was amazing. Also want to thank our college and career coordinators that helped put this slideshow together, and Rochelle Scharnhorst. So we're going to start with Chester Lewis Academy first. Principal Leroy Parks. We have Jasmine Banks, who is going to Butler County Community College, got the neighboring states access scholarship. We also have Isabella Buckmaster, Butler County Community College, Merit Scholarship. Saquon Collins Sutton, going to Emporia State University. Destiny Lowe, Prince George's Community College on an athletic scholarship. Julio Robles, Butler County Community College, Theater Tech Scholarship. And Sierra Sutton Collins, going to Brighton Stratton College with a merit scholarship. And our last, Chester Lewis Academy, is Brianna Weiss, going to Butler County Community College on an academic scholarship. And we'll just hold applause to the very end as well as we get through all these schools. Our next school up, we have is East High School. Principal Sarah Richardson. The seniors that are recognized are Reagan Carlson, going to the University of Kansas; Ricardo Canstanen, Wichita State University, Rudd Scholarship; Weston Ingram, going to Kansas Wesleyan University; Jordan Fuller, going to the University of Virginia; Vivian Lee, Wichita State University, got the Gore Scholarship; Audrey Nye, California College of Visual Arts, the Diversity Creative Achievement Scholarship; Robert Safley is currently undecided; Luke Severz, going to the University of Tulsa; Sarah Shaw, going to Wellesley College; and Olivia Wilch is going to SMU, the Southern Methodist University, Provost IB Discovery Scholarship. Now we're moving on to Heights High School, and their top 10 seniors are Colby Adams, University of Oklahoma, University Scholarship; Ashton Conley, Butler County Community College, Athletic and Academic Scholarship; Taylor Jamison, George Mason University, Athletic Scholarship; Honosley Kitchen, Southwestern College, Athletic Scholarship; Olivia Lerman, University of North Texas Dean Scholarship; Sheila Mercy Vital, Newman University Academic Scholarship; Perla Navarrete, Wichita State University, Langston NSAS and Davis Scholarship; Kiana Porter, Southwestern College, Athletic Scholarship; Bethany Stock, Kansas State University, Limestone Scholarship; Harmony Williams is currently undecided, got the Dean's Gold Scholarship. Now we're moving to North High School, and their top 10 seniors are Samantha Arazza, Wichita State University Dell Scholarship; Bayon Hudeb, Washington Jefferson, WSU North Scholarship; Cassidy Kamavanka, Central Christian College, Athletic Scholarship; Maria Lira Rodriguez, Friends University, the Merit Presidential and Athletic Scholarship; Cynthia Mesa Soto, Coffeyville Community College, Athletic, Academic, and North Scholarship; Leontes Moreno, Wichita State University, the KHEDF Scholarship, that's the Kansas Hispanic Education and Development Foundation; Janet Rodriguez Morales, Wichita State University, the Rudd Scholarship; Jackson Strau, going to Colorado State University at Pueblo; Jessele Zapata, Wichita State University, the KHEDF Scholarship; Kevin Zapata, Newman University, KHEDF Scholarship. Now moving to Northeast Magnets, top 10, we have Valer Adair, University of Kansas, Chancellor Scholarship; Endea Donnell, University of Central Oklahoma, Athletic Scholarship; Kellen Higgins, University of Puget Sound, Presidential Scholarship; Josiah Harrington, Wichita State University, Marine Corps Reserve Association Scholarship; Ellie Lisk is currently undecided, the University Scholars Scholarship; Peyton Navarro, Newman University, the ASC Community Leader Scholarship; Cameron Overton, Tuskegee University Presidential Scholarship; Darlene Rubio, going to Kansas State University, the KCAI President's Cabinet Scholarship; Liliana Smith, the University of Nebraska at Lincoln Presidential Scholarship; Crystal Vu, Wichita State University Academic Merit Scholarship; and Tylinn Wilson, Missouri State University Academic Merit Scholarship. Now moving on to Northwest High School, we have Jace Dulery, going to Oklahoma Christian University; Jayden Echols, Langston University; Quincy James, University of Missouri; Reagan Jones, the Missouri Western State University on athletic scholarship; Zachary Leatherman, undecided; Leo Leopold, going to Friends University; Mallory Lund, Southwestern College; Haley Murphy, Newman University; Amarian Smith, Ottawa University; Joy Stanton, Oklahoma Baptist University. And now moving to South High School, we have Corey Bell, Friends University Merit Activity Scholarship; Sabrina Bowie, Wichita State University Merit Scholarship; Tyrell Burns, going to Wichita State, got the Rudd Coke and Merit Scholarship; Johan Gurica Torres, Newman University Athletic and Merit Scholarship; Malachi Caribo, Baker University Athletic Scholarship; Angel McDaniel, Eckerd College Merit and Activity Scholarship; Alexis Miller, Friends University Merit Scholarship; Jordy Mascada, Wichita State University Rudd and Merit Scholarship; Edwin Ordones, Butler County Community College Merit and Activity Scholarship; Emily Swaffer, Friends University Activity Scholarship. Moving to Southeast High School, Sofia Casares Gonzalez, Butler County Community College, Assistance League Scholarship; Erica De La O Vasquez, Kansas State Polytechnic, Veneer Family Scholarship; Alexis Jimenez Herrera, University of Missouri, Kansas City, Chancellor Scholarship; Elliot Nottingham, Friends University Athletic Scholarship; Jessica Ta, University of Minnesota Twin Cities Achievement and Community Scholarship; Heidi Taylor, University of Kansas Academic Scholarship; Quentin Thomas, Friends University Academic Athletic Scholarship; Arenia Thornton, Ottawa University Academic Athletic Scholarship; Adia Tolbert, Kansas City Art Institute Merit and Governor's Scholarship; Shakweta Walker, undecided Athletic and Academic Scholarship. Now moving to West High School, we have Quinton Alford, Tabor College Athletic Scholarship; Denny's Calvio, Friends University Presidential Latino Leader Assistance League Scholarship; Kate Cruz, Fort Hayes University Fine Arts Academic Scholarship; Evan De Priest, Bethel College Athletic Scholarship; Marcy McCullough, University of Arkansas Little Rock Athletic Scholarship; Jaleel Montgomery, Wichita State University Athletic Scholarship; Caleb Pless, Southwestern College Athletic Scholarship; Joines Rivers, Southwestern College Athletic Scholarship; Sheila Romero, Wichita State University Tech Fine Arts Scholarship; Angelika Rosas, Friends University Academic and Fine Arts Scholarship; Deshaun Starr, Southwestern College Academic Athletic Scholarship; and Kira Steps, Heston College Athletic Scholarship. Can we please join me in congratulating these wonderful students for a job well done? It's great to be able to put at least a picture up there of the students since they weren't here to be in person, so we are excited and so proud of our seniors for what they're currently doing and what they're going to do, especially even persevering through this obstacle that we've had to deal with with this pandemic. So at this time, I'll turn it over for any comments or questions that the board has at this time.
Well, I am sad that we can't greet these students personally because they certainly deserve that, along with all of our other students that have received scholarships. Almost $22 million in scholarships so far for our students, that's outstanding. That says we're doing a whole lot of things right, and they're doing a whole lot of things I am going to stop the meeting for a very short recess. We've had a little technical difficulty with our remote phone-in with our three board members. They do have that corrected, and we're going to be switching to a different system that's more effective for everyone to hear. So just a brief pause in our meeting. Ready?
Okay.
The 2019 Challenge Award from the Confidence and Kansas Public Education Task Force. So we have some schools, out of 92 schools, that received the Challenge Award. These awards recognize Kansas schools that are making a notable difference in student achievement despite facing significant challenges. Since its inception in 2002, more than 1,700 awards have been presented to schools across the state. Certificates of Merit were presented by Kansas State Board of Education members, and I do want to give a quick recognition to District 8 Board Member, State Board Member Kathy Bush; District 7 State Board Member Ben Jones; and District 10 State Board Member Jim McNeese, who have all really looked at their schedule to help celebrate and recognize by actually presenting these awards to our staffs and our schools at virtual staff meetings. So I really appreciate the time they're spending to help recognize our schools for this accomplishment. So I'd like to name the schools now that have received the 2019 Challenge Award. Goes to Allison Traditional Magnet Middle School, Principal Amy Johnson; Horace Mann, Dual Language Magnet School, Principal Vanessa Martinez; Jardine Technology Middle Magnet School, Principal Laura Jo Atherton; Robinson Middle School, Principal Amy Champlin; Mayberry Cultural and Fine Arts Magnet Middle School, Principal Jeff Friend; and McLean Science and Tech Magnet Elementary School, Principal Cindy Graves. So a great accomplishment for all our schools who won the Challenge Awards and will be recognized and celebrated at virtual staff meetings by some of the state board members. So if there's any questions or comments at this time?
This is a great honor because it says we are being successful even though we have great needs in some of our schools. So we're very proud of these schools. It's wonderful. And again, we're just sad that we can't recognize them in person.
Absolutely.
Next item, Mike?
Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board. Under Education Continuous Learning Plan Update, on March 30th, 2020, the board approved the Wichita Public Schools waiver application packet, including the Continuous Learning Plan for submission to the Kansas State Department of Education. The district has implemented, excuse me, the district has implemented the district-wide Continuous Learning Plan to provide all students access to evidence-based resources, guidance, and feedback to instruction during the closing of schools. Today's presentation is an update on the Continuous Learning Plan. This presentation is for the board's information.
Good afternoon, board members. You all look very healthy today. It's good to see you. All right, so today I'm going to talk to you just a little bit about our Continuous Learning Plan and give you an update. And I have to tell you that we have some amazing team members and educators and leaders in this district who are giving of themselves on a day-to-day basis for our students, and so for that, I'd just like to publicly say thank you. And as I've talked with superintendents across the country, I'm both energized by the quality of work that is happening here in Wichita and inspired by the innovative efforts I see in other communities that we can learn from to make our continuous learning process better. I want to share highlights of the statement that we shared with all of our employees last Friday regarding our operations after the governor's statements. We first emphasized two commitments to our Every Student Future-Ready Strategic Plan, and we are committed to providing continuous learning opportunities for WPS students during this period of uncertainty, which includes excellence in academic, social, emotional support, and student nutrition. And we are committed to the safety and well-being of all of our district employees. Because of the new rules, nothing has changed for WPS employees for the month of May. School buildings and administrative centers will remain open, will remain closed, not open, closed, to the general public traffic through May 31st, and our Continuous Learning Plan remains in effect through the end of the school year. All employees will continue to work at the direction of their supervisors, and those who can accomplish work duties remotely are encouraged to continue to do so, and employees who work on location are expected to practice safety protocols as outlined previously. Buildings are allowed to schedule events to shut down the 1920 school year, which would be for the purposes such as textbook check-in, classroom clean-out, and the like. We are working through those plans and are making sure that we are gathering the appropriate cleaning supplies and materials that we need in order to do so safely. We will continue to monitor state and county public health guidance, and will allow this feedback to direct our Phase 2 short-term reopening plans for summer of 2020, which we are planning to finalize and share with you and our community at the end of the week. Between now and the end of May, our educators and support staff will continue to provide continuous learning opportunities for students. Our teachers will continue to reach out regularly to students and families. They are utilizing online resources, reviewing lessons in the packets mailed home, and taking advantage of phone conversations, Microsoft Team meetings, and social media connections to challenge our students in continuous learning. Our final Continuous Learning Packet will be mailed out next week, and to share some of the innovative ways our teachers are engaging with students, we've created a social media series called WPS Tools of Engagement, featuring our rock star teachers, and they are sharing with families and other teachers some of the great ways to enhance communication and learning between home and families. Our DCTA New Secondary Teacher of the Year, Sam Belson, at Com, and he started us off, and they've been a pretty cool, amazing pieces, additions to our continuous learning. You can find the Tools of Engagement series on our social media channels. As we continue to teach and engage, we are also working with our educators to collect data on who is not, who are we not reaching? And we're talking about students, who are we not reaching? And we are going to administer the FastBrig screening assessment with our students yet this semester in order to monitor student learning. And some of you might ask, why are we administering an assessment during a period of flux? This data is important, along with other student data that I just mentioned. It will help provide us vital information about the learning gaps that our students will face when they return to school this fall. We will be able to provide some targeted learning opportunities this summer, but most important, we need to understand what the learning gaps are in order that we can best be prepared to accelerate learning with our students when they return to us in August. We hope that's when we're able to return back. There is no question that some of our students will have learning gaps when they return, and we need to be prepared to support them. To support the nutrition for our students, we will continue meal distribution for the remaining three weeks of the school year. To support learning of our staff, we will continue to differentiate professional learning opportunities to offer expanded topics each week for both teachers and para-professionals. And to support learning for our families, we will continue to offer digital learning workshops via Teams and provide regular content updates on WPS Learn website so families can access those resources as well. We will continue to focus on how best to engage, educate, and support our students and staff as we prepare for Phase 2 and as we plan for Phase 3, our long-term reopening strategy that will prepare us to reopen this fall. In my nearly three decades as an educator, I have never experienced anything that rivals to the disruption of uncertainty that this pandemic has brought to the public education and to our country. And we must continue to lift one another up, understand our realities that our students and our families will face as our community begins to reopen, meet them where they are, and support them with all the love, enthusiasm, and professional excellence that we can bring. Board members, I hope you walk away from today's meeting with a sense of confidence that we have held nothing back in doing what is right for the students of the Wichita Public Schools. I've said it before and will continue to say, breathe deep, let me see you do it, Mr. Rody, deep breathe. We will get through this together. And thank you for your leadership for public education in Wichita during these extraordinary times, and I'm happy to take any questions that you all may have at this time. times, and I'm happy to take any questions that you all may have at this time.
I'm seeing no questions, Dr. Thompson, but we really appreciate your staff and you taking the time to truly figure out how do we educate kids when they aren't at school? And is it perfect? Probably not, but we're working, and every time we find a flaw, I can tell from what you're saying, you work to change that. So, thank you. Next item, Mike?
Mike Willemey, Clerk of the Board. Under Finance Budget Report, Administration will update the Board on the budget. This item provides an opportunity for the Board's information and discussion.
Welcome. Are you ready?
Thank you, Dr. Willemey. Good afternoon. Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, and to my right, Addie Lowell, Budget Director for the District, here to answer the meat of the questions that you might have today as we give our Fiscal Year 21 Budget Development Report. So, again, good afternoon, President Logan and Superintendent Thompson, members of the Board. We are here to give you a quick update on what we know related to Fiscal Year 21 Budget Planning. And we'll start with the slide that we've presented to you a couple times now, which is our revenue and fixed cost estimate from before the COVID-19 outbreak. So, we had, as a refresher, we had estimated revenues based on the increase to base aid from 4436 per pupil going up to 4569 per pupil, which is in statute. And that was a 3% increase. Our revenues will be under that amount because of declining enrollment. So, we had given you kind of that history of how we developed this almost $9.3 million revenue estimate. We had also given you some information related to our fixed cost expectations for Fiscal Year 21. The primary driver here was transportation increases at around $6 to $6.5 million, and the remainder were kind of the normal players that we see with fixed cost, utilities, insurance, some of our contract consumer price index increases. So, we had kind of come to a resting place that we were going to need to find a little bit of revenue for, to cover the shortfall of about $200,000. And then, we would need to do some, take some actions beyond that if we wanted to do and meet other educational needs. So, this was all kind of pre-COVID-19 planning. So, as Dr. Thompson indicated, we are definitely seeing a lot of impacts related to the pandemic that we had, we could never have anticipated. And certainly, our budget planning process has been impacted as well. So, certainly, the revenue picture in the state of Kansas has been impacted dramatically, probably more dramatically than at any other time in history. And we're going to go through a little bit of what we've learned here in the past two weeks. We don't know how federal stimulus dollars in the different forms of packages might come into play. We do have one piece of information, but guidelines are still coming in. We just had another release from KSDE about the CARES package today. So, we're still learning more, and we'll be bringing to the Board some of those details as we get them. But some, that revenue side of the picture has become a little bit unclear, a little uncertain. So, we might need to back off some of those earlier estimates, retrench, and bring you back some additional information as it becomes available. The fixed cost increases, we know at this point at least, transportation in its historical footprint wouldn't change, but as we start to address what school will look like in the fall, we may be able to come in with some additional information or strategies around those fixed costs. Again, a lot of unknowns related to what school looks like in addition to what our revenue picture looks like. So, we're kind of doing, are dealing with two different sides of the coin. We have some uncertainty related to revenues, and now we have uncertainty related to what fiscal year, the 2021 school year might proceed. So, this is unusual in that we have actually two kind of paths of uncertainty that we're trying to deal with when planning Fiscal Year 21. And so, that leaves this big unknown picture in what we have to work with for Fiscal Year 21 at this time. But what we can share with you today is that we do have at least some information on the state's revenue picture. And I want to show you two charts. The first chart on the left is how the state general fund receives its revenues. So, 51% of what the state drives in form of revenues to its general fund comes from income taxes. 32% comes from retail sales, 6% from corporate income tax, another 6% in compensating use, and then a smattering of other types of taxes and fees. But the bulk of it, so 83%, are income tax and retail tax. And those two sectors of revenues have been dramatically impacted by the closure of businesses. What happened, the state of Kansas has a consensus revenue estimating group that meets annually to forecast what these tax revenues are going to be for the state so that then the legislature and the governor can build budgets around what those expected revenues are. So, then they take their revenue estimates and they can build the planned expenditures. And they did that last November, and the darker green bars show you where those revenue estimates were last November for Fiscal Year 20 and Fiscal Year 21. The lighter green bars are the estimates that the consensus group came to the table with just this past April 20th, and you can see dramatic reductions in both Fiscal Year 20 and in Fiscal Year 21 as far as the anticipated impact of COVID-19 on the state's revenue streams. In fact, over those two years, they are anticipating almost $1.3 billion less into the state coffers than originally anticipated last fall, which is a significant drop for sure, but the speed of which it's happening is also pretty dramatic. Those estimates were based on just a few weeks of data at that point, and what we did see with the end of April figures was that their estimate, at least for April, was within 1/10 of the actual number that came in. So, they were pretty spot-on with their estimates. So, at least at this point, barring other events, the $1.3 billion reduction appears to be a pretty solid number. Again, we're going to learn more month over month as we go through the various phases of recovery and what that looks like for the revenue picture. Looking at this a slightly different way, we took a look at where the state was projecting its ending cash balances in the general fund. In, for Fiscal Year 19, so June 30, 2019, the state did have a surplus of funds available for use. And as we went into Fiscal Year 20, that was anticipated to continue. The state was anticipating a surplus of $926 million at the end of Fiscal Year 20, so June 30, 2020. That was the original plan, was for the state to end well into the black. However, with the COVID situation, we are now, the state is now estimating those revenues to end at $200 million, so a over $700 million drop in just three months. And then, as they go into Fiscal Year 21, where they had anticipated a surplus of $730 million, they are now anticipating a deficit of $653 million. And again, those estimates were based on about two or three weeks of data when they came to the table with those on April 20th. That's an 8.1% budget shortfall to the state's budget based on Fiscal Year 21 budgeted expenditures. So, it is a significant issue as we go into Fiscal Year 21, at least as far as where the state believes they're going to end the year. So, why does this matter to school districts? And why should we be watching what the state does next? And if we only have to look at the budgeted expenditures in the state's general fund to understand that answer. K-12 accounts for 52% of the expenditures in the general fund. So, if the general fund is short and has to figure out, the governor and legislature have to figure out a way to cover that shortfall, 52% of that is K-12 education. 11% is higher ed, 26% human services, 6% public safety, and then again, a smattering of other items. But certainly, the bulk of it is K-12. And kind of as we take that information and scale it down to us, we're going to kind of take you back a little bit into some of our Budgeting 101 information. I've given you a copy of Addie's fantastic document called "The Budget at a Glance." This is our version of being able to understand school budgeting in an eight-page document, which is saying something, I'm going to tell you. But we're going to cover a couple key slides out of this document to kind of put some context to that $653 million shortfall that the state is going to potentially experience in the general fund. Certainly, a school budget should reflect what it costs to educate students. That's its goal, is to tell the taxpayer where these dollars are being focused. When we talk about the revenue side of our equation, we get our funds from three sources, the state, the federal government, and local sources. We get 73% of our budget from state sources, state aid. So, of our $761 million budget, $550 million comes from the state. So, we've talked about this at many Board presentations. As the state's budget goes, so does our budget go. So, it is something we need to be very aware of, how the state is going to react to the shortfall, because so much of our revenue stream comes to us from the state. Even though the 20 mil levy that we levy locally is part of that equation, we still need to be very watchful of this whole process here in these next few months of what the state's going to do to basically fill that hole. When we look at our expenditure side, and this is a reminder kind of of our wheel of operational spending, we purposely focus as much as we possibly can in the classroom because obviously, that's our core mission. So, 87% of our operational budget is focused on the direct support of students. Beyond just the teacher, which of course is the most critical component, but beyond the teacher, nurses, social workers, librarians, school administration, food service, transportation, utilities, having lights in classrooms, all of that makes up with instruction kind of that complete picture of what it takes to educate the student. That 13% of facilities maintenance, which you could argue is also in support of the student, but we don't reflect it that way, but you could make that argument. And then, business support services and a little bit of general administration. There's not a lot of pie left when you try to protect the classroom from a potential reduction in revenues. Because again, reduction in revenues means some sort of adjustment for us on the expenditure side. So, this is just a reminder that we, when we focus dollars on the classroom and we don't get those dollars, those dollars have to come from somewhere. So, we may not have enough flexibility outside of the classroom to hold the classroom harmless. We don't know it yet. It's something we have to watch. Looking at the data just a little bit differently, we have spending in major categories, salaries and benefits, purchased services, supplies and materials, transportation, kind of these are the big players in our budget. Three-quarters of what we spend are people. So, those same groups that we talked about, nurses, teachers, paras, social workers, psychologists, speech therapists, the whole gamut of services that we provide our students, 75% of our budget is wrapped up in people. So, when you only have 25% that isn't people-driven, you have, again, limited options on what you can do that don't impact people at some point, depending on the depth of what might come at us. And again, we don't know, we haven't had any information yet as far as what the state's going to do, but these are things we need to keep in mind as we're planning for the what-ifs of all of these factors related to how our budget works today. So, even if you, and then if you add in besides salary and benefits, the other expenditure categories that do impact the classroom as well, supplies and materials, transportation, utilities, purchased services, you can see, except for bond and interest, there's very little left to go to, to look for additional dollars that we could pull back. And again, just because we're just, we're throwing the kitchen sink at all the different ways to look at our budget, this chart shows a breakdown of the budgets by program. So, essentially, all those dollars that we have in our entire budget, where do they go to as far as a program cost? And the half of the wheel is kind of our big four areas, special education, elementary education, middle, and high. So, 52%, give or take, is essentially the core of what we do. And then, you've got another three, three or four larger items that are either restricted federally, so nutrition services, the CAPERS piece, which would be a state restriction, that's that flow-through piece of CAPERS that comes to us and leaves us in 30 seconds that we have to reflect in our budget, the federal grants beyond nutrition services title, and then capital outland bond and interest. So, again, you start to, you start to kind of look at the major cost programs, and you can get to about three-quarters of the way around the wheel before you hit something that we might have that isn't classroom or classroom program-driven. So, again, what I think this chart shows nicely is, we are pretty well-balanced as far as our segments, elementary, middle, high, special ed, and some of the federal funds. We have very little flexibility when you get down into all the little programs, and there's just not a tremendous amount of dollars there either because we are focusing on our core mission, which is the education of students. And then, again, we've shared this before too. When we talk about the funds and where we potentially have the ability to pull back should we need to, there are certain restrictions on where you can spend certain types of funds. So, in our entire budget, 2/3 of our budget would be considered restricted or targeted to a certain level of spending. So, if we are getting a waiting for bilingual, we are restricted to spend that on bilingual students. If we are getting a waiting for at-risk, we are restricted to spend that on at-risk programs. When we get federal dollars for nutrition services or Title I, there are rules and guidelines and statutes that we must follow and mandates that must happen related to those dollars coming into us. So, when we look at flexibility within our budget, only 1/3 of the budget can actually be moved to different purposes. So, again, this is really setting the groundwork, the framework for decisions that might have to be made as we move forward in this process, when we learn more about how the state will address its budget shortfall. Just like our expenses must equal our revenues, the state is in a similar situation. Our state cannot operate the general fund in the red. So, it will have to do something to address that shortfall as it looks towards its Fiscal Year 21 budget. We will, depending on what the steps are and how those roll to K-12 schools, we will also need to make sure that our expenditures do not exceed the revenues that we're getting. So, these are the actions that we are starting to look at and plan around as we move forward. What the state could possibly do, so this slide shows state options. The legislature could come back into session, finish out its Fiscal Year 20 session, and look at reducing some spending, look at ways to potentially increase tax revenues. They could also look at different transfers. There are some actions that could be taken. The governor can make what's called an allotment, where you, she can reduce some of the expenditures on a very targeted basis, or she could make across-the-board reductions and come up with, say, a $100 million ending balance to carry forward into Fiscal Year 22. So, again, we believe Fiscal Year 20, there probably wouldn't be too much activity in that fiscal year. We are looking probably at some action by the state for Fiscal Year 21. The state probably will want to take into account the federal aid it could possibly be getting. Right now, we know that the CARES Act had some targeted interventions for schools, and we know a little bit about that. We'll be able to provide you a little bit more detail in about, our next meeting in two weeks. But there are other stimulus packages out there that the state could be receiving, and how much of that ends up then trickling to K-12 or to other areas of the budget, we don't know the answers to that yet, but that will be another piece that we'll be watching through this process, is where those federal dollars land. Again, we know Fiscal Year 20, there won't be a lot of activity primarily because the fiscal year is just about over at this point. So, we only really have the two months left. There's not a lot of maneuverability. Most of those expenditures have been committed and are spent. So, what we do know is that if we have to wait until the beginning of fiscal year, or beginning of the calendar year 2021, when the legislature would meet starting in January, before we have an answer to what the state might do, that does before we have an answer to what the state might do, that does present us some hardships. Because that becomes a mid-year adjustment for us, and we will have made our spending plan, we will have employed people, we will be more than halfway through the year at that point. That becomes very problematic for us to accommodate a potential reduction in revenues, because our year is more than halfway over at that point. And a lot of our contracts for services may have already been paid for at the beginning of the year. So again, we just lose flexibility to answer whatever comes at us the longer we wait for So we mentioned this, I think, last month, but we have some strategies that we are employing right now, and we have some strategies that we're looking at for fiscal year '21, and wanted an opportunity to tell you, the board, what kind of what our action plan is at this point, given there's a tremendous amount of information still to come our way. At this point, for fiscal year '20 activities, we are continuing to hold on nonessential spending. We are developing a plan to release some dollars back into the system to prepare for '21, but that, we're trying to retain some flexibility within this year's budget to help us potentially address next-year budget issues. And there are savings, and we've had some talk around utility savings and fuel savings. Those areas are, we're targeting primarily, but we are also looking a little bit deeper into some of the supply chain budgets to what can we pull back, what has to go forward, and we're trying to come up with a plan to give our schools and our programs direction on how to spend for the remainder of this year, especially while we're still developing plans of what next year's school year looks like. Again, kind of that double-edged sword of trying to plan around two major unknowns and figure out how we spend our funds. Again, focusing that spending right now on the continuous learning plans. We are recruiting, we are recruiting new staff, but we are really focusing right now on the hard-to-fill positions. The others, we're kind of just in a hold for a moment to see if we can get some more information before we start down a path of filling vacancies that we have in the budget, knowing that that is an option we could look at if we got into some sort of deep reduction So for fiscal year '21, we have various teams working on what the academic year will look like as we move through these phases, and if we have to move in and out of phases as we start the school year. So a lot of that, those teams' work will kind of drive our budgetary decisions as we move through this process. We are also working, from a budget perspective, on three funding scenarios. The first one is, we receive the new money as anticipated, there's no issues, we expect an economic recovery like we've never seen before, and we just move on down the path. That's a little sunshiny, but that is a strategy that we're going to plan around. The other option might be that we receive no new money, but the state at least gives us as much as they gave us this year per student. That still would be a small cut for us because of our declining enrollment, but it wouldn't be a deep cut at that point, and we have some strategies that we could deploy to cover that. As we go down that third option, where we start to plan for a possible cut to base state aid, potentially anywhere from five to kind of really worst-case scenario, maybe upwards of 15%, then we start to map out how we would address some of that kind of deep cutting. And we are in the process of trying to develop a framework of how we get to those cut decisions. So for those of you, unfortunately, that have been through this before, you know that there's a lot of moving parts to deciding what to, where to reduce, and how to reduce, and how to engage stakeholders. So that framework is being developed as we speak, and we'll bring some of that back to you in these coming weeks. Hopefully, we won't have to go down to those levels. That's, we hope for the best, we plan for the worst, that's what we do. We make multiple plans so that when things happen, we are prepared for a go-forward plan right there, as opposed to waiting until it just hits us in the face. We also will be bringing back plans for this one-time CARE stimulus dollars. Right now, we're hearing around 17.3 million would be available to Wichita Public Schools through this stimulus package. But again, we are just now seeing some final information coming through to KSD. I believe there's a 3 o'clock conference call on this today. So they're still kind of moving a little bit, but we'll bring back a potential plan for the board. Keeping in mind that it's one-time money, and so one-time money is best used for one-time needs, as opposed to using it to plug a budget hole, and the act doesn't really allow for that type of use of money anyway. It's very targeted to technology, supplies to battle COVID-type of, you know, cleaning and those kind of things, those kind of supplies, school needs based on the COVID pandemic. So it has a structure to it as far as how you can spend those dollars. So we're going to want to spend some time vet through those requirements and kind of come up with a go-forward plan, related, again, to the top item of what our plans are for the academic year. And then the other thing you might have noticed today, that there was really no purchasing agenda or consent, and that's because we're going to kind of retrench on what we're bringing to the board for outside purchases, contracts, those type of things. We want to go, put all of those through a kind of a tighter vetting process, not only for potential savings, but also have we reviewed those contracts, what are the terms if we have some sort of shutdown again, so that, again, all of those items are answered before the start of the school year, and we're not, again, just reacting as things happen to us next fall. And I think it will be important that we look at those payment structures and language to vendors as far as protective equipment, and all of those questions that are still not decided at this point, but we need to review those contracts and have some information for you as we bring those forward. So that's kind of why we put a pause on the consent until we put these new procedures in place and we start to vet those just a little bit more carefully, knowing there's a lot of unknowns still coming. So our budget takeaways for today, fiscal year '21 budget planning, which had been kind of cooking along pretty well, has become a lot more challenging as the district works on plans for what school looks like for fall of 2020, and it addresses any sort of pass-through due to the loss of sales tax and income tax revenues at the state level that could have an impact on K-12 education, but that have not been announced or any action has been taken yet. So we don't know that there will be, but we want to make plans accordingly. Again, we're working on those what-if scenarios so that we are ready with an action plan for the board, and we are sharing today that we have, that our recruiting and spending for, in preparation for fiscal year '21, the school year and other needs are being impacted both by the funding uncertainty and by the operational uncertainty, but plans are being made so that we can move forward with what we need to do, when we need to do it. And at this point, we can answer any questions that you might have, hopefully with more than we don't know.
Board members, do you have questions?
Dr. Diana State, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, Ernie.
I would like for Julie, I would like for her to reiterate when the date of the fiscal year for the state is and when the fiscal year for the 259 is.
So both the state, this is Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, both the state and the district share the same fiscal year, which ends June 30th.
Thank you.
Ron Rosales, 6th District.
Yes, Ron.
Yeah, I was just wondering, Susan, so when all the students are not in the building, obviously the buildings are not being used, is that money saved, or it might be minimum, but, or minimal, but I imagine it is money saved if the buildings are not open. What can you speak about that to the public?
Sure. This is Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. As part of the, kind of the waiver process that we receive from the state in order to complete this school year, we are paying our employees. So again, we go back to that chart, where is the bulk of our spend? It's 75% people. 75% of our budget continues to operate as it has been for the most part. There's some savings in limited areas, but for the most part, our salaries are moving along as anticipated. So where the savings will occur are lines like supplies. Utilities is the primary one, where, primary line we'll save on, because that is a month-to-month bill, so as we don't have people in buildings, lights aren't on, the air isn't running at its normal, you know, pace, we will experience utility savings, we will experience fuel savings related to transportation. But because of how we spend our dollars and when we spend our dollars, a lot of those contracts for fiscal year '20, those were actually paid in full at the beginning of the fiscal year. So we don't have savings related to maybe a curriculum item or an intervention program. We didn't, we weren't able to cut those off, those dollars were gone. So for the most part, other than supplies, utilities, and what's remaining in school budgets that we are holding right now in hopes of saving some of that, because some of the, some of the spending that occurs right now is actually for fiscal year '21 to get the school year ready. We will have some savings, we're trying to carve out as much as possible. We'll have some numbers here in the next few weeks as we come up with a spending plan that we can forecast where we think we're going to end the year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reeser.
Stan Reeser, board member. First off, a kind of a specific question. Is our transportation cost of 3.7% is that comparable to other school districts around Kansas? And I realize our district is very difficult to compare to other districts, we're kind of unique in our own category, but is that 3.7, is that higher or lower than other school districts?
I don't know that I've done a by Kansas comparison. We know that the districts that do in-house transportation have a different cost structure than in our case where we outsource, but it isn't, yeah, it isn't, we don't feel it's unreasonable, and if you look at us compared to other large urban districts, we are right where we should be, if you will. We do know that we've had that problem for the past five to 10 years, where that contract's actually been undermarket.
Right.
So as we kind of correct here as we move forward, that percentage may go up, which, again, might put us a little bit either more in line or less in line with Kansas schools because, again, we look so different, it's a little hard to compare to, say, an Andover
And is it fair to say that since we spend a great deal of energy on providing choice in our district, that our transportation costs may be a little bit higher?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, they are impacted by choice, yes. Now, some of that, we don't have an option to reduce, because choice, that choice impacts other areas as far as compliance pieces.
Right.
So you have to be careful as you go down that transportation venue to, if you want to make changes, we still have to maintain our compliance with different rules and how we address equitable pieces of transportation, which I can't come up with the term right off the top of my head, but yes, with, we are going to be looking at our transportation footprint as part of those, that fiscal year '21 process, and if we have some options to bring to the table, we will be bringing those to the table.
Stan Reeser, board member. So just to simplify this presentation for the public and for us, would it be fair to say that our 2021 budget is being driven by the uncertainty of the 2122 budget, and we are looking at three different scenarios? One is the sunshine scenario, where the economy recovers very quickly, revenues start getting back up very quickly, and we basically try to rebound as quick as we can. The second scenario is things return to normal, but there's a slight downtick, and it takes a little longer for the economy to come back up, takes longer for the state revenues to come back up, and we're talking about, but everything basically stays equal, and there, but that means a slight decrease for our budget. And in the third-case scenario, the opposite of the sunshine scenario, the disaster, where we are talking about major cuts. Is that fair to say for the general public?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, I think the categorization of those plans are correct, but make sure we're talking about those will impact fiscal year '21, so school year 2021, with the potential of creeping into the next school year '22 as well. So it is an immediate impact as we go into fall of '20, what might, what those scenarios might, how those might impact the school year, not a year from now.
Stan Reeser, board member, and that's why I was saying, so 2021 is being influenced by 2122?
I'm not sure I'm following, but I do, what we can tell you is, the revenue estimates that the state has put out for its ending year fiscal year '20, so 63020 and 63021, we're concerned with the ending balance that the state's going to have at the end of '21, and because our budget for 2020, 2021 is contingent upon them being in the black, they will have to reduce their expenditures in 2021 to get back to a positive ending balance. That's why we're concerned with what's going to happen this coming school year, and then ongoing as well, depending on how fast the economy recovers. So not just a year, not a year from now, but really, what's going to happen to us this fall?
Stan, if you heard, mentioned, she mentioned maybe a mid-year cut, and that's not, that is something that has happened in the past, so we may have started the school year with the full budget, and then mid-year, which is going into the 21 financial calendar for the state, they may then cut mid-year, which means that we don't, that's not our cut for next year, we have to cut in December. So there is a possibility that we will cut in December, according to what the funds look like. They would have, they're going to have to do something, we don't know what, but if they do something, that will have us to be able to respond. Hence why we are now preparing ourselves for what could happen to us in December, and also, we need to be thinking about what happens to us for the following school year. Does that make sense?
Yes. Stan Reeser, board member. So based off what you just said and what Dr. Thompson just said, we're going to develop this coming year's budget, assuming that we do not have to make mid-season cuts, or are we going to develop it assuming that we will have to make mid-season cuts?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, both.
Okay.
We're going to, we're going to work through various assumptions. One is, the state will address its shortfall here in the next few weeks, as far as what is it going to do with its fiscal year '21 budget, and how does that impact us? They could address it now and give us a plan for how it's going to happen, and we would have to adjust our budget accordingly. They could wait and address it next January in the next legislative session, and at that point, whatever would come our way would be a mid-year cut, and we need to think through what that looks like now, so that we know what it looks like when it happens and what we're going to do. And then we need to start thinking another year ahead of if we go out again, if this raises its ugly head again, and what does that look like for us, and how, what does that impact fiscal year '22? We need to plan for that as well. So to answer your question, we are planning for all those scenarios in this next school year and a school year down the road.
Stan Reeser, thank you.
Just a little bit of a follow-up to that. The budget for this coming year was passed by the legislature before they adjourned before, and they're coming back sometime in April, but they did pass the budget, correct?
I believe that's correct, Susan Willis, I believe that's right.
Okay. And, and, but what we're saying is that a lot of things have changed since they passed that budget.
Correct, that's correct.
And we've got to, and they may come back and say, we recognize a lot of things have changed, and we're going to cut X, Y, and Z, whatever that is. And then we would know a clearer picture of how we have to plan for the next year, but if they don't do that, we still have to plan that they may do that when they come back as the new legislative group in January, correct?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, yes. I think we need to plan for all of those contingencies, which is, we know what the plan's going to be here in the next month, however they're going to address it, they get back together and they make a plan, or the governor makes a plan, whatever is going to happen, happens soon enough so that we can make decisions and move forward. We have to plan that they We have to plan that they don't make that decision, or they think that the revenue estimates are off, or there's another income stream, or federal dollars are going to come, so that they don't have to take action now. If that doesn't come to fruition, what will happen to us in December, January? And we make a plan for that. And we make a plan for none of that happens and how do we move forward? So multiple plans depending on those, those points of decisions that may be, are made beyond us and how we're going to react. Yes.
Cheryl Logan, they, so really you're doing almost three different budgets.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. Addie, how many budgets are you going to be doing?
I anticipate that we'll have probably close to 15 different scenarios in our budgeting system by the, by the end of June 30th, so.
You, you guys are doing yeoman's work. Multiply your normally normal work of one and multiply that by 15. You haven't had a lot of time off, have you?
Uh, no. Thank you. No, we typically do about seven different scenarios just to start the budget year. And again, remember, we start budget planning for, we started budget planning for FY21 last October. So coming now in April and making adjustments to now have some additional budget scenarios prepared, it's definitely a shortened timeline and we're grateful for the teamwork we have with district leadership to help us through that.
And we thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
But the bottom line is you're getting new information on a daily basis and things are changing accordingly, correct?
Correct.
Okay, one more question. And that is, this is the time of year when we have our teachers retiring and leaving us because they've served their time and they want to be able to go into retirement. Do we anticipate anything changing with our retirements or our people that we normally, because normally we'll have 250 people or so leave our district. Do we expect that to happen again?
Addie Lowell, Director of Budgeting, what we've seen thus far is what I would call maybe a slow in the resignations. So again, with some of the economic uncertainty, I know, I'm not leaving my job anytime soon. So I think we've seen a trend in resignations coming in and the timeline that they've done so in years past. So again, it's, it's hard to say with people working remotely what we'll see with retirements. But we'll, we'll plan for normal and we'll plan for, for less resignations as well, so.
Okay.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. Addie, you had to actually run some numbers though, that we were, was it 30% behind normal pace? What was, what we were?
Normally by this point in the year, we are at about 50 or 60% with the resignations being turned in, and we're sitting right at about 30%, so.
So people are holding off on making decisions?
Yes.
And we actually have some, some data to talk to folks about why. And some of the reasons why is because of the stock market, people's retirement monies have been affected. We've had people to say, you know, spouses may have been laid off or furloughed for periods of time, so it's taking a toll on the household, so they need to continue to work. So this, this pandemic has caused people to pause on retirement, and so we won't know for sure exactly. And I think we do have a date of when they have to finalize that, and that date is?
It's May 29.
May the 29th. And so we'll have a better handle on that at that time.
So just about a month from now, a little less. Okay, other questions? Ben.
Ben Blankley, District 1. For those of us who weren't on the board during the mass cut era of 2010 to, I guess, 2018, basically, what is this relative scale of like a 5 to 15% cut now versus what we, what the district had to go through in 2010 through 2018?
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer, so the decline can be compared to the Great Recession 2008, 2009. But the impact over the years, we didn't see quite this level of decline so quickly. That's the real challenge with this particular downturn is how fast the bottom has dropped and how quickly it's going to impact those state revenues. Now, again, whether that's long-term or whether we'll see a bounce as businesses start to reopen, that's certainly what the consensus revenue estimating group is anticipating in 21. That's why they're not, it's not quite the decline you see in fiscal year 20. But it's still a decline. So the big question for us is if it, if we have a resurgence and we have to close again, what does that do to the estimates? What does that do to the state revenues? So this is so much more of an unknown and no historical perspective as opposed to kind of your normal recessionary pressure that happens. But it is comparable over time, but this is a much shorter duration.
Okay, thank you.
And those times were not fun. Any other questions? I'm seeing none. Thank you so much for your report. We, we appreciate all of your hard work and all of your team's hard work. Thank you. Next item, please.
Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board, consent.
Stan Reiser, do you have anything to pull?
Stan Reiser, no items to pull.
Mike?
Mike Brody, District 5, no items.
Cheryl Logan, at large, no items.
Ben Blankley, District 1, no items to pull.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, nothing to pull.
Ernestine? Ernestine? Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, nothing.
Okay. Ernestine, are you there? Must have, must have dropped her. Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Ben Blankley, District 1, I move we accept the consent agenda.
Julie Hedrick, District 2, second.
Okay, the motion's been made to accept the consent agenda by Ben Blank, Ben Blankley and seconded by Julie Hedrick. Would you please cast your votes? Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Mike Brody, District 5, no.
Stan Reiser, District 4, yes.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine? Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Okay, the motion passed 5 to 1. Next item.
Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board, Policy, Resolution 202007, suspending BOE Policy 1806 Report to Parents on Pupil Progress. Resolution 202007 states that end-of-year report card mailing requirements, which are contained in BOE Policy 1806, administratively updated in November 2013, be suspended for the 2019-20 school year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Report cards will be available online for parents and guardians to view and print. BOE Policy 1806 is provided for reference in Appendix 3A. The policy is not being revised. Resolution 202007 will temporarily suspend the end-of-year report card mailing requirements for middle schools in AIP 17 and high schools in AIP 21, 25. It is recommended the board adopt Resolution 202007 Report to Parents on Pupil Progress as provided in Appendix 3B. Report cards will be available to parents and guardians online.
Okay, Dr. Thompson, this basically is just saying we're not going to mail out the report cards to our middle and high school students, correct?
That is correct.
And only for this one time?
That is correct.
All right. And, but, but will elementary, middle, and high still have some kind of a report information at, available online for all of the students?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this?
Yeah, Julie Hedrick, District 2, has a question. You know, in this day and age, most people have online access to be able to access those report cards. But, but what will be the plan in the event that, that a family or a student would, would not happen to have online access to retrieve their report card?
As they would with anything else, just contact the individual school and make arrangements with the, the school. So as the teachers are calling, if, if people want, if someone had a request, they can make those requests. They could call the homework hotline, as we've done with anything else as it relates to the packets and information sharing. Those are all spaces wherever there's communication, they can request those things at that time.
Okay, thank you very much.
So we, Cheryl Logan, we would be asking them to contact us to do that?
No, she asked if a parent wanted a copy that were not able to get online, they just contact the school and we'll get them a copy.
Yeah, that's what I said. They need to contact us.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just so it's clear to parents, we're not going to be mailing it.
No.
They need to contact us if they can't get it online.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I move we accept the policy. Mike Brody, District 5.
Okay.
Ben Blankley, District 1, I second.
Okay, the motion's been moved by Mike and seconded by Ben that we accept the resolution. Would you please cast your votes, starting with Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Mike Brody, District 5, yes.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine, District 3, yes.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Okay. The motion passes 6-0. Next item.
The next item is under operations. This is Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board. 202021 Kansas Association of School Board, or KASB, appointments. As provided in BOE Policy 0300, Board Officers, the Board approves appointments to KASB committees as required by that organization. This agenda item provides an opportunity for the Board to vote to approve the appointments of Board Member Ernestine Crable to the KASB Legislative Committee and Board Member Julie Hedrick to the KASB Nominating Committee. This item is also an opportunity for the Board to discuss any 2021 Legislative Committee issues. The Legislative Committee will meet on August 29th and November 7th. The Nominating Committee will meet on September 12th. This committee organizes the nominating process for the KASB election, which will be held at the KASB Conference in Overland Park on December 4th through 6th, 2020. This item provides an opportunity for the Board's discussion and appropriate action.
We have not gotten any information from the Legislative Committee, have we, Ernestine?
No.
Okay. So we certainly can make suggestions on things that we would like, but we haven't gotten anything formally proposed from them. Are there any suggestions on things that we might want to do before we vote on these appointments?
Ben Blankley, District 1, one thing, if we do go into a cut mode, I know currently we don't have the statutory reimbursement for special education. It's underneath that right now. So if we need to cut, maybe targeting that portion of the allocation from the state as more protected than general funds to try to insulate our most vulnerable students as we move forward.
So you're suggesting that KASB look at that and see if they can put some kind of protection on special ed funding?
I think so.
Okay. Ernestine, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Any other?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other suggestions? I would entertain a motion that we appoint Ernestine Crable to the Legislative Committee and Julie Hedrick to the Nominating Committee.
Ben Blankley, District 1, so moved.
Cheryl Logan, at large, second. Okay, it's been moved by Ben and seconded by Cheryl that we appoint these two people. Would you please cast your votes? Stan?
Stan Reiser, District 4, yes.
Mike Brody, District 5, yes.
Cheryl Logan, at large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Next item.
Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board, miscellaneous superintendent's report.
I just have a couple items from our report today. First, I want to give us a special shout-out in honor of our teachers. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, if you did not know that in our community. And to more than the 4,000 teachers in the Wichita Public Schools, please know that we hold you in our highest regard. And as many of you have worked so diligently over the last six weeks, the magic that happens in our classrooms, that are happening in our continuous learning plans, we know that it all is because of the efforts from our teachers and staff in our building. So we appreciate you. And then I, I also want to give a special shout-out to parents too, because under these kind of uncertain terms, you all have become teachers as well. And so I just want to celebrate our teacher-parent teachers who are out there that are working really hard to support your student at home as well. So those are the two folks that I'd like to just highlight today is our, our teachers and then our parent teachers that are at home. And we appreciate all that you've done for our students.
Yes, and for those of you listening, if you know a teacher, please thank them. This is Teacher Appreciation Week. It's a big deal to us, but it's really hard for us to do the kinds of things that we normally would do for them, so. Next item.
Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board, Board of Education Report Requests.
Stan, do you have anything?
Stan Reiser, District 4, no reports or requests.
Mike Brody, District 5, none.
Cheryl Logan, at large, none.
Ben Blankley, District 1, I just wanted to give a shout-out, like Dr. Thompson said, to the parents out there who are, are taking this on. We, we weren't, we weren't expecting it, but we're doing the best with what we were handed. So we've got just a little over, about two weeks left in the formal school year, but that summer slide is real and it's going to be happening even more, so this year. So one of the things that we as parents can do, the public, the Wichita Public Library just announced they are holding summer reading program. Signups are open. It started actually May 1st. You can, the, the reporting of it is all, is all online. It's 20 minutes a day. 20 minutes a day is two picture books or, you know, sit down, read with your kids. It's, it's worth doing. It's, it's something that, that you need to take time for, because it's going to really help your kiddos out as we move forward. Because it, it, fall is still an unknown. It still is, is an unknown. So here we go.
That's right. Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, I'm going to ditto Superintendent Thompson. Thank you to teachers and parents. I have nothing additional.
Ernestine?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with this speaker in mute. I want to emphasize what was just said about the, how grateful we are to the teachers. And I want to say again, like I said last time, it took 150 years for the Wichita Public Schools to have the kind of quality that we've had in the classroom, in-person teaching. And here we have had to recreate and have created the most magnificent system we could in the short amount of time that we had to be able to do this with the parents. I saw an item online that showed a parent, a parent's van that had written on the side of it, "You lied when you said my child was a delight to have in the classroom." And I think that that's one of the things that parents are very grateful to the teachers and we are very grateful to the parents because this education as, as we're doing it now couldn't happen without both sides of that. And I just want to really emphasize how grateful we are to all of the people who said, "What can we do now? How can we make this work?" And thank you to the, to the staff and the administration that was so creative and jumped in instantly and solved this when it was such a surprise. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, and ditto. Ron?
Yeah, to all the, the facilities people going back to work. Yeah, to all the, the facilities people going back to work, just want to wish them well.
Thank you, yes. As we walked in today, we did see people at work in this building. That's great. Next item.
New business?
Does anyone have any new business today? I'm seeing none, but I want to recognize Superintendent Thompson for just a moment.
Yes, while we have the opportunity, I'd like to just recognize Ms. Shannon Crissell, who is in the back of the room today. This will be probably her last board meeting that she will attend with us, because one week from today, Mr. Sean Huspitt will begin to work as our new Human Chief Resource Officer, and he will be working alongside Ms. Shannon. She will be taking some time, and she will be working with him up until July. And so as you know, Shannon is preparing to retire from the Wichita Public Schools after a distinguished career here. She will be truly missed in this school district. Mr. Huspitt comes to us from Davis Moore Auto Group, where he served as the company's Human Resource Chief. He currently serves as the President of the Kansas Society of Human Resource Managers and has been an active volunteer in our district over the last several years through our district Dream Keepers Middle School Career Exploration Project. So we're excited to have him join our team, but we're also feeling some kind of way about Ms. Shannon Crissell retiring, but she is, well deserves it, and I'm sure she'll be spending all of her time with that beautiful grandbaby of hers. I think they're becoming twins. They kind of look alike, and she will be enjoying her career, but we will always pull her back in and make her volunteer when, when she's not spending time with that grandbaby. So Shannon, congratulations on your retirement. We love you, and we will, we will dearly miss you. And Kevin?
Thank you. I've loved every day of it. I love this district. I thank you all for your support. It has been the best career anybody could ever have. I hasten ending it with a pandemic, but it has afforded me the opportunity to spend a lot of time with my six-month-old granddaughter, who's, by the way, becoming an expert in Microsoft Teams. She gets on team calls with Dr. Thompson and Susan Willis, all different kinds of people. And so there is always a silver lining, but this is a fantastic district. The people in this district are phenomenal. The strategic plan is great, and even though you have challenges ahead, great things are still going to happen in this district. So thank you all of you for giving me the opportunity to serve you.
And just, Kevin, if you're listening, welcome to the Wichita Public Schools family, Kevin Huspitt.
We're going to miss you. We're going to miss you greatly. You've done a wonderful job for us. Thank you so much. Next item.
Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board, Executive Session.
Mike?
Mike Brody, District 5. I move the board recess into executive session for purposes of consulting the board's attorney to discuss a matter involving, involving pending litigation and a matter, and a related matter pending before the administrative agency. Both matters are deemed privileged under the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and the open meeting will resume in, will resume in this room at... Sorry, I can't see the clock.
Oh.
It's 1:40.
2:10.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Stan Reeser, Fourth District, second.
Okay, the motion's on the floor to adjourn to executive session, made by Mike and seconded by...
Stan.
Stan. I wanted to say Ron, sorry. Please cast your vote. Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Cheryl Logan, At Large, yes.
Mike Brody, District 5, yes.
Stan Reeser, District 4, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
We are in executive session. The board's back in session. Next item.
Mike Willamy, Clerk of the Board, Executive Session Number 2.
Mike?
Mike Brody, District 5. I move the board recess into executive session to discuss related affairs involving an administrator and a certified employee that fall under the non-elected personnel exemption of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The Open Meetings Act, the open meeting will resume in this, in this room at 2:45.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Ben Blankley, District 1, I second.
The motion has been made by Mike Brody and seconded by Ben Blankley. Please cast your vote. Stan?
Stan Reeser, District 4, yes.
Mike Brody, District 5, yes.
Cheryl Logan, At Large, yes.
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
Motion passes 7-0. We are in executive session. Call the meeting back to order. Next item.
Pending or adjournment?
I still move, Mike Brody, District 5.
Mike made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Ben Blankley, District 1, second.
Okay, there has been a motion to adjourn. Before we vote, I just want to announce again that our next meeting will be May the 18th at 12 noon in the School Service Center. Let's cast our vote on adjournment. Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1, yes.
Cheryl Logan, At Large, yes.
Mike Brody, District 5, yes.
Stan Reeser, District 4, yes.
Julie Hedrick, District 2, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District 3, yes.
Ron Rosales, District 6, yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks.